The betterment of the community, may we find peaceful solutions to all of our issues and problems, and may they be few. As you're blessed as long as it sees them, may the joy of it not be just this month, but all way through the years, and may we always be pleasing in your sight, in Christ's name. Amen.
All right, I'm glad my chair has gone off. It's like a fail.
Welcome everybody out tonight, and we'll get started with the first item on the agenda is approval of minutes.
May we approve minutes?
I'll second it.
We have a motion to second any further discussion. Does the favor signify with a "I"? Post same.
Motion passes.
Approval of bills?
Make a motion to accept the bills.
Second.
Motion to second any further discussion. Those in favor signify with a "I"?
Trying to keep looking at me when I'm supposed to be saying something.
Those in favor signify with a "I"?
You didn't say that, did you say it before? Have you ever heard this?
My thing is say it fails. Under old business, first item is approve the updates to employee handbook that we handed out last month's meeting.
I looked through it and I found no major changes could have.
It was just wording phrases mostly, wasn't it?
So I just moved to approve the second reading of it.
Second. We have a motion to second any further discussion. Those in favor signify with a "I"? Post same. Motion passes. New business, first item is adjust the housing authority penalties.
Matt came through to drive through last month with the payments for November. He advised that they only cut their checks on Thursday. The check was cut on 11/7. He was out that Friday, and then also that Thursday wasn't November, that Monday. He didn't give me the reason why he didn't get it to us that Tuesday, but he finally brought the payments on Wednesday and asked that I had to do all to adjust those penalties. And I told him, "All right."
How much are the bills?
I had three different bills, total of $258.13.
Did we visit this last time?
We have done this before in the past, and looking back in the minutes, it was advised at that time it wouldn't be adjusted ever again, but now that's a wet deal.
Well, you know, I questioned the idea that he held on to those on the day he cut them. You know, he didn't even try to mail or anything, that he'd have walked them in on Wednesday.
Almost a week later.
I think what happens if I'm correct, the lady that does her checks, I don't know if she comes in in the evenings, I think she works somewhere else, and maybe just does that once a week, does their checks.
On Thursdays, yeah.
And of course, I think it requires two signatures as well on the checks, but...
But they didn't make an attempt to put it in the night pot. Now, you know, the thing about it, the other thing about it, the bills come out, you've got them about 10 days, surely whoever writes the check can write the checks within that 10-day grace period. Sometimes they're even out sooner than that.
They usually go out on, what, about the 24th, 25th?
Soon as I get my disconnects, on the 24th, I give my billing done and mail the next day.
I make a motion we don't adjust, because I remember going through this about not too long ago.
And I'm going to abstain from anything we get to on that.
We have a motion.
Sad thing is, I thought my daughter's on that too, and I don't know, should I abstain on that?
I don't know that we have to have a motion even do this, do we, Mary?
I mean, just as you're known for this, this is fine.
And, I mean, that's fine.
Yeah, I mean, if we don't need a motion, that'll be fine.
I don't think, I think it just, because the policy's in place now that the penalty's to be paid.
And if I remember right, when we visited this last time, we let them know that we would not adjust it again. So, I know that may sound a little hard on them, but...
Okay, Mike, next item is approve the police shop with a cop.
We received a grant from Walmart for $2,000.
Wow.
Part of that grant was to be a local shop with a cop. We'd like to get $500 to shop with that $2,000 that we received. Also, over a certain matter, we have another case that we got $5,000 in lieu of forking a truck in case that went into also. But what I'm asking is $500 from that $2,000 that we got from Walmart to go shop with a cop.
I don't have a problem with that.
Do you want to make a motion on it? Probably would, since this money going out.
Who gives that $500 grant to shop the cop?
Second.
Got a motion to second any further discussion. Those in favor signify with a "I"? Post same. Motion passes. Next item is to appoint Larry Smith to the planning and zoning board.
I make that motion to appoint Larry Smith?
Second.
We have a motion to second any further discussion. Those in favor signify with a "I"? Post same. Motion passes.
Where does he live?
Fourth Street.
Fourth Street.
Yes, thank you.
And these next three are part of corrections on some annexation issues. The first one is to approve the resolution for Raines Avenue. I got, we're going to do these separately.
I make a motion. We accept the resolution for Raines Avenue connection correction. Refresh my memory, was it where we were correcting?
Oh, it's just, it's where the state maps are off, and we had to go in, because they had a pin at A instead of A.
I remember that, I forgot.
Six inches.
Six inches?
Whatever it was, I'm just...
You're right, it wasn't very much, but I didn't realize it was six.
Well, I'm just using, I'm being a little sarcasm there, because we've been dealing with, we've been dealing with this with the state for, what, almost nine years now?
I've forgotten that.
I seconded it.
Got a motion to second any further discussion. Those in favor signify with a "I"? Post same. Motion passes. Next item is the same resolution for the tractor supply part of their property.
So move.
Second.
Got a motion to second. Those in favor signify with a "I"? Post same. And the third one is the East 8th Street Souter area.
That one, they were, so move.
Second.
Got a motion to second. Any further discussion? Those in favor signify with a "I"? Post same. And that motion passes. Next item is declare surplus of Woods Sidearm mower.
Yes, we'll do our audit for the 2018, 2019 fiscal year, and there's a couple pieces of equipment that has not been used in several years to take it off our inventory list. They recommended a clearance surplus where we can sell it or dispose of it. And one is a Woods SO5 sidearm mower, and the other is a old blacktop rotor.
Is the one that's down there where the...
Yes.
You won't be done for that.
What? Junk, I mean.
I mean, that's...
It's on our inventory list, though, and this is the way to get it off.
Clean it up, is it right?
No.
No, we're shocked.
Is this something to make?
I've seen bad asphalt rollers before, that's a bad asphalt roller.
Is there anything anybody wants for parts?
I'm telling you.
Lawn decor?
We had to put on the list to fix, and now we're just...
Then I make a motion that we surplus those items. Do we need two separate?
Yes.
Make a motion that we surplus the Woods Sidearm mower.
I'll say goodbye.
We have a motion to second any further discussion. Those in favor signify with a "I"? Post same.
I make a motion we declare the surplus blacktop rotor for sale.
Second.
Motion to second.
With junk.
Any further discussion? Those in favor signify with a "I"? Post same. Motion passes.
Put it in Kevin's yard for lawn decor, it sounds like he's interested.
I could sand, you could, honestly, this is what I would do, I would sandblast it and paint it, and put it as like a yard ornament. That's what I would do. It's about all the good it would do.
Do I hear an offer?
No.
I think so.
If you haul it up there and sandblast it and paint it, I'll take it.
Or do you want it to boom feed you too?
No, you asked what the offer was, I made it offer.
Next item, we're going to accept a bid on this Ford Ranger.
The high speed came in at 9:32:09 from a Clinton Davis in Louisville. It was a high bidder on the go deals.
I'm curious, this was on there once before, wasn't it?
Yes.
Did it sell then?
It did. A local person bought it, they were making payments, and after three or four payments, they decided they didn't want it, so...
Come back. Refresh my memory, what, about 800 we sold for last?
That was 11.
That was 11 on?
Yes.
I make a motion to accept the bid.
Say goodbye.
We have a motion to second any further discussion. Those in favor signify with a "I"? Post same. Motion passes.
Don't do it on payments.
No.
Exactly.
That's what I was going to say, yeah, you should do it on payments.
Rarely does that, rarely does that happen, and if it's going to Louisville, you might see it.
The annexation correction, what exactly were you correcting on that?
It was, from what I understand with the state, they, they went back several years ago, and they started doing everything by GPS, and they went back on, and we've had several of them over the last 10 years that we've had to do this with, where a call from an engineer, we go to a point, and it didn't exactly line up with where the state said the GPS point should line up, so we've had to go back and redo it.
So you had to make the correct...
Just make, get an engineer.
To what they say?
Yeah.
Okay. And the Ford Ranger, what was it, just a...
98 Ford Ranger.
But was it just a...
Little work truck.
Work truck, correct. That's all I got?
David?
Couple things, we've got our walkers in, in the process of installing them, and then Fire Department Police Department partner, Mr. Horstertot, it was a drive to Walmart to pull toys in for kids in Ohio County. I'm a law, I'm going to go to the Housing Authority over here in Big Bend, and right now combined, there was 145 toys donated with eight coats, and there was $400 plus dollars that was also donated that they will go buy more coats and toys and stuff, and be given out here, I think December 23rd, I think is when they're going to do it, but they'll take it down like the Housing Authority and different places like that, and give these toys out to kids that don't have anything for Christmas. There was a real successful move to drive.
All right, Tommy?
I'm good.
Best? Chris?
Yeah, I'll do, see what kind of agreeable measures we can reach to kind of prevent my property from being obstructed during the Second Street festivals. Basically, I've tried several different ways to keep my parking lot from being covered up with, you know, patrons of the festivals and things, and their vehicles, and vendors as well. The vendors are getting better, but we still have people coming up in there wanting to park, and naturally, people want to get as close as they can to the festival, and of course, I'm in agreement that I want what's best for all the businesses in downtown Beaverdam, but primarily, I have to look out for my own, and I'm going to have three tenants, three apartments to rent out here very shortly, and I need those people to be able to utilize that rear parking lot without obstruction. And basically, what we run into, I'm not going to be able to run down there and barricade off that parking lot every time we have a festival. So, I don't know, I, this, at this point, I appreciate you trying to put up some barricades at the end of the alley to discourage people from coming up there, but where I'm not sure what to do at this point is, how are my tenants going to get in and out to my parking lot when these big activities are going on? If we've got the alley barricaded, and then Second Street barricaded, and there's no possible way they're going to find a place to park on the street, so where are they going to go? I mean, I mean, I've tried every, every possible to keep people off of that area, but it's just a possibility, you know?
Could they cut through up between the two buildings, you know, where they have the gun shoot in the other building we own? Could they not cut up that alley and they going that way? Wouldn't that get them the back way that way? I mean, if I'm thinking where you're going, I think that, that could possibly be a way to get in there.
Probably the closest.
Do you have parking, tenants parking only signs?
I looked at it.
Yeah, I've got five signs up down there. Yeah, I've got five signs.
Wow.
Do you know what I'm talking about, Chris? You go right down this street, go down toward, on this main, what is this?
Madison.
Broad, Madison?
Go down Madison.
Go down Madison, and after you go by this first building, take a left between the two buildings, there's a little alleyway, it runs right out, comes right out over on that street that behind your building. They could go up there, take a left, and go right into their parking place. Because, well, I know we didn't block it off, because I was here Saturday, and it was not blocked off. So I know you could have gotten there if you had to have, you know, that there Saturday. But that, that's just an alternative. I'm not saying that's the way you have to go, I'm just saying, that would be an alternative to get in and out, it wouldn't be blocked off, because I was here Saturday, and I went down there and looked, and it was not blocked, it was, they were having a gun shooting, that's the reason I wanted to enter to look at it. I never been to that thing.
Do your signs say that violators...
Someone might have moved the barricade. I know earlier in the day, I was here to get things from the building, and then...
Well, now, the barricade was on, on First Street, but it wasn't on the alley. That's what I'm saying, they could have gone up the alley and taken a left, and come in right behind your building.
On this other little section of it.
Yeah.
It's not really an alley, it's on our, our property.
Yeah, it's between these buildings, we own both buildings, so it wouldn't be like you would be affecting them.
Do your signs say violators will be towed?
Yeah.
Have you ever towed anyone?
Yep.
Well, I'm out of options then. I'm just thinking about in Louisville, you know, that's a lot, that happens a lot there.
Hey, what I was encouraged to, the church we towed.
Because we hate to tow people, so we printed up a bunch of notices, and we just try to remember who we've left a notice, you know, or taken a picture of their license plate. We leave notices, because we get a lot of beach traffic during colder weather, rainy weather, of course, people want to get as close as they can to the door. So we just try to leave notices, and then when we know big festivals are coming up, we've been trying to barricade off, so that we can still get in there to load up trailers or whatever's going on, or drop stuff off, but what's coming up in the near future is I'm not going to be able to put those barricades up, because we're going to have people living there, and for them to have their own designated parking areas, I need to be able to prevent the extra overflow of parking from festivals, you know? I come in late Saturday night, and I have a van, a car, and stuff sitting up in there. I didn't have time to barricade it all Saturday. I didn't do it anyway, because it was a Christmas festival, but, but we did have people parked in there, and people kind of hanging out in the parking lot, but, and it's just going to be more impractical and hinders the people that are going to be living there, basically.
And that's also one of the things you have with downtown living, it's...
Yeah, it is hard, I know. But, that's the only alternative, I mean, they could...
Yeah, they can drive through.
Well, even if you use the barricades, I know it's not the best case situation, but it'd be better than not being able to get in your parking spot. If I were a tenant, I wouldn't mind to move the barricade, pull through, and pull it back, so I could get in my parking spot, is that...
Very doable.
I'd rather do that than not have my parking place. And I know, I know it's a nuisance, but it's not every day, I hope, that you're not losing your parking every day.
I hope we don't have a day like we had Saturday, every, every weekend down here.
Well, no, that's not what I mean.
That'd be crazy.
We got businesses that want it.
Continue, yeah, yeah. And I'm part of one of the downtown merchants.
One of them had their biggest day in nine years, this weekend.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, they're there, they know. There's not really anything else to do, is any...
I haven't got them. This is one time I don't have a clue.
Well, the bad part about, there's no way, then they can't turn down Second Street to get their parking lot, I have to come in the back way.
Yeah, everybody that's finding their way up in the lot, they're coming in off of 62.
62, that's what I'm saying, that gives them another alternative to come between the two buildings, that gives them two ways to get in there. But like you say, if you don't block it off down there, everybody in the brother's going to come in that alleyway and park up there where your building is, unless, like you say...
Yeah, I think if there's any open avenue, they're going to find it, and they're going to get in.
They, they, you may be wrong.
I mean, you know, I know last year, a couple different times, we had the barricades up, and people just moved the barricades, and pulled up there anyway. We had vendors backed up in there, little big trailers and stuff, and we finally started trying to use boards and screw the barricades together, and people still tried to move them. We had some of them broke apart and kicked out of the way, so, you know, I, it's just, it's almost an impossibility, I don't know if we could put up enough signs to get through to everybody that, that, that area is for private use.
Do you have any suggestions? I mean, have you given thought?
Well, I mean, I don't really, I don't really know, I mean, it looks to me like the park would be more suited for festivals than Second Street, but, but if that's not something we can get away from, maybe we could move the stage trailer and kind of direct everything toward this side.
If we put it in the park, then we have the downtown vendors, that's the key.
And they're the one, they created most of the festivals, and these festivals have been going on for 20...
Long time.
Christmases, 15-plus, Strawberry Festival 20-plus, the music's been four or five years. I mean, most people, when they, when they get a place downtown, they know it's there when they come, because it's there before they were, so that's, and like I say, I talk to business owners all weekend long, and the comment I get is bring more stuff in, have more events.
Yeah, and I don't disagree with that, but at the same time, I need to be able to use my property for what I have, you know, I mean...
Is there any other parking lots back in there that he could, that the people could use, where they could get in and out quicker?
Well, it wouldn't be right up at the back door, we own that, we'll park it over there, we can...
Well, people park there too, so I mean, it's not like they...
Yeah, but you could probably, you could possibly do some reserve parking there.
Do we have anyone that is parking cars during those festivals?
Mm-hmm.
So maybe that would be a good solution, is to have volunteers.
Well, that's, it would be good if it was a contained location, but you've got from Oldham Park to the other park, and both Grace and everywhere.
Maybe it's in that area, you know, maybe we could have somebody volunteer to just park cars where it would block that.
We had to try, some people tried to watch that this time, and apparently, it didn't work as completely well, because...
Well, you weren't paying your volunteers enough.
Well, of course, they were there early with the vendors and stuff, to make sure the vendors weren't.
Yeah.
The ladies were here at seven o'clock.
Chris, now, like with Scott, even the people that lived over his, but we've always had a parking spot set up for them over in our parking lot, and they just parked over there and walked across. Because they couldn't get to Second Street.
That's what I'm saying, give an alternative where they could park where, and I, and I'm, I'd be the first one to be guilty of saying, hey man, I want to park by my house, or my apartment, or whatever, but sometimes, like I said, it may be, we have to reserve some place to put them, just for that day or two. Because this, this was Friday night and Saturday, I know Strawberry Festival, that's five, what, four nights now? Yeah, so that's a little bit different, but...
But again, it turns out, any downtown property, you have that kind of issue.
Even though, by my, the Strawberry Festival's kind of cleared out, so let's make some cuts one day out.
Well, I know when you have the bigger events, like Strawberry Festival, or the October Festival, was pretty big this year, and I know I, I spent over an hour, there was five cars parked on my lot, and I spent an hour trying to get them off. I mean, I had them announcing at the stage that I was about to tow these vehicles off, and I had a truck, and a truck, 20-foot trailer loaded from front to back, trying to get into my property to unload this trailer, and I can't do it. I mean, I can't park down here on 62 to do that.
Yeah.
And, you know, I mean, it, it was a, it was an ordeal, I mean, I really thought I was going to have tow all these cars. In fact, the tow guy was on the way when the last car finally came and moved. We had one person that either wasn't hearing the announcements, or just wasn't planning on moving, but finally, they, they showed up, by accident or otherwise, and finally left, but, but it was, I don't know, I spent over an hour trying to get that resolved, so I could just get in there and do what I had to do.
Do you feel that my suggestion would work?
Well...
I mean, it's a nuisance, I know, but you, you've got a nuisance already.
Well, maybe we could put up some, you know, I don't know, you mean the city putting up some barricades and big no parking signs or something like that, or...
That doesn't do any good.
No parking, that's what I'm saying, they just...
Well, I mean, you were saying you put barricades at First Street.
Barricade that alley between this Ashby Building and the Quonset Hut, where they could get in and out that way.
Yeah, that would work.
But, but, yeah, yeah.
And then do it across...
Yeah, because I know they do have parking time behind the shoe store.
From his corner to the, that little brick building there where the, well, pump houses at.
But you can tell people all the time, how about the parking, they're still going to do it, because when we did the park, we put so many signs that said, do not park on the grass, and Paul and I were walking down through there, and we almost got run over. We were in the middle of the black grass, and a car come, missed us by, what, this far, come flying through the grass, and there was a few signs that don't park in the grass.
Yeah.
Well, it didn't say you can't drive in the grass, though.
He not took me and him out, it was close.
I don't understand why people just don't follow the rules.
Chris, it may be a trial and error, we may just have to keep working at it until we figure it out. That may be what we have to do, and I'm not being, trying to be, put you off or anything. I'm just saying, it's probably going to be a trial and error, but I have to figure out what works the best in certain situations.
Yeah.
And we'll try and work with you as best we can, we will.
Well, I appreciate that.
And try, you know, try those barriers and see if that works when your tenants get in there.
Well, I mean, we, like I said before, we barricaded the entire parking lot off for the last couple of years, and people just left. Like you said, they'll move them out of the way, and do what they need to do, and then they'll go on, and someone else comes along and says, oh, but they barricaded that there tomorrow.
Well, we barricaded Madison Street off for the 5K Saturday morning, and the rudders took off, and they were supposed to come back down and go back down Madison, that's why we had it blocked off. It wasn't, 30 seconds after the race started, comes this big fan, and then just run right by the barricade, just kept on coming.
One suggestion might be to put on the sign, residents only. Because if you just put no parking, people just assume you're just, you just don't want to park there, so there's like, there's no residence, you know, people are simple. So if you put on there that residents only, nobody's living there.
Residents probably better than tenants.
I hate to sound facetious, but in Kentucky, if you put a barrel out in the middle of that street and paint it, don't look in that barrel, you'll be run over. Somebody would go do it.
Probably. It'd amaze me what they do.
Larry?
Yes, we'd like to talk about the city doing a impound lot for cars that are seized for DUIs, for no tags, expire tags, insurance, wherever the police department has them impound for. Talked to Mike a couple weeks ago, and he said, I think last year, that they had roughly 100 that was impound. The state would allow us to charge $25 per day, per vehicle, and then we could charge $25 a day for, to lock them in and also release it. I know the police department's short now, they was talking about maybe wanting a seventh officer, and this would be, I think it would be a good extra way to, to revenue some, revenue some extra money.
On average, how much, how many days does a car stay?
We don't know, we don't know, they don't come to us.
Yeah, like units of...
Don't have any way to...
I just thought there'd be an average, like what you thought they'd stay.
I know there's a lot of work built into it, I know there's a lot of responsibility built into it, liability.
That's what I was wondering about, too.
We'll have to have a secure impound lot, and it'll take a pretty good size impound lot. I don't know if we have one suitable, I don't know, Larry was talking about maybe a building somewhere, but you're going to have to have a secure lot, where people can't get in it. We're going to be able, would be but one or two allowed in it, because once something goes in there, we're responsible for, Dean, Dean, you said, right, Eddie?
And if it's evidence, if it's, if it's seized for evidence, then it's, it's evidentiary, and any access through some chain of custody, that has to be followed.
Well, it would have to be put inside a building somewhere. Maybe the others that we towed, like no insurance, things of that, or they could probably be left out in a secure lot. It's gonna have to be a secure lot, because it'd be
Anything that is seized, Tracy Beatty told us that we could bring to his lot. And if it, if, what he had recommended was if, if it goes to a seizure where we have access to it when we sell the vehicle, that we would split part of the money with him. So as far as the seize, that's, that's not issue. I mean, right now, all your road back, your wrecker services, they're making money off of it. They're making money off of what our police officers is doing. This is a way to put money back in our pocket to hire another officer.
When they take, when they take one of the vehicles in, out, say, say, just pick a lot, I don't care, any of the people, Browns, Greggs, whoever.
I'm not picking a lot.
Well, I'm just saying, but I'm just saying, you put it on their lot, do they have to, do they have to inventory it just like you would have to do?
I don't know whether or not, but.
I mean, are they supposed to?
They're, that's up to them. I know what we do, and we'll have to. Because if they come back and say, oh, there was ten dollars worth of change in there. And we're like, no. And they say, oh, yeah, it was. And it's no, we inventoried right here, did it? You know, we'll take pictures of vehicles, but, you know, they'll have to be, there's lots too.
Do we have any idea what the liability insurance would be, or something like that?
So again, you got, and I don't know, Larry said he talked to some wrecker drivers. You're gonna have to get some wrecker drivers on board to do this. And I think that we do let them, we need to say, okay, this is, this is what we're gonna allow you to charge, not just to bid it out and say, you know, well, what do you take to be on this wrecker list? And then, and they bid it out, and they say, we'll take three hundred dollars. Well, you, I mean, and you, I mean, you have to pay a three hundred dollar wrecker bill at that point.
I've talked to, I've talked to a few wrecker services, and what they're telling me is they would actually lower their price because what we're reading into, people are having three wrecker services that they're using, and they're on rotation. They lower their price to haul a car in the city limits of Beverden because we're only two and a half, three miles long, maybe a mile wide. So they'll lower their price, and not only when, when we seize one for DUI or whatever, when there's a wreck in the city of Beverden, they're the same three people we're gonna call. So they're, right now, they're gonna get the wreck vehicles, vehicles, and get the insurance money off of them. So they're gonna actually lower the price to, to move a seized vehicle.
And I don't think that's the issue, really. But like they said, if it's.
Well, you know, Michael's saying they'll charge three hundred dollars. They're not gonna charge three hundred dollars.
Yeah, but if it's evidence, I'm, I'm thinking more from the security and liability aspect.
If, if it's a seizure on evidence, it'd go Tracy Beatty's lot in Hartford County Sheriff's Department.
And then, then who's liable for it then, is, if it's on his lot?
Well, Tracy, then, is gonna do it on inventory.
If it's our vehicle on their lot.
They're gonna do the inventory and the paperwork, and, you know, if it goes to a sale, they would get a portion of the money.
Larry, have you done any summary of previous work on what our property would have to do to, to make it possible to have these impounds? What do we need to do?
Not, not at this point, not at this point.
We need to know what we need to prove, if we need to make our property, but invest between these before we can really move on. But we have no idea what we're putting.
What it's gonna cause stick it into something like that.
The property may not be up to grade. So if you can get that together, then we'll know what we are viable to do, what we can't do.
My suggestion would be Charles, Commissioner for Police and Public, for police, maybe get you and Mike and Larry and Tracy, get together and sit down and.
I don't know. I don't know. And, but again, I had to talk, you had to talk to Tracy. I don't know. But if we impound a vehicle at midnight, and you take it over to his lot, I don't think he's gonna send somebody out there to inventory.
It has to be inventoried at the scene. I'm not sure. That, that vehicle has to be inventoried at the scene.
Yeah, I'm just looking at extra ways to get money for a seventh officer.
So if, if a wrecker service comes and picks it up, they inventory it?
No, no, they don't. They don't right now. Now, you're talking about two different, two separate apps and origins there, as far as, as far as if we, if we start doing that, there's, there's gonna be questions. For whatever reason, we get, our integrity gets questioned way more than your tow truck driver that, I don't know about.
Would it, would it be in order to say that we need to put this up to a further study?
Oh, yeah, we can't, I don't think we need to make any kind of vote tonight. I think it needs to be quite a bit more.
Get some information studied.
Impounded, whatever you wanna call it. The wrecker service does not have to inventory it, but at least they.
I don't know what they're. If they're supposed to or not, is what he's called, or you said, he's out.
I know, I know what I wanted. Talk to them.
Okay, so he called one, and their policies and procedures on it are that, that it, that vehicle has to be.
At the scene.
And the sheriff, the sheriff inventory's there.
Mary called one city, and they do a sale every two years, and they generate sixty thousand dollars. I mean, you know, in, in sales of seized vehicles.
Yeah, that's the same thing I talked.
Is that, is it comparable in size, two hours?
For twelve miles.
You think it's comparable to ours?
It's, it's a bail. It is a bail. Once you, once you take. It's in the nature of the bail, and it has to be, it has to be secured and protected as long as it's on city property. And if, if something untoward happens to the vehicle while it's impounded, then the city's ultimately responsible. So it, it has to be secured, and, and obviously, it needs to be inventoried. I don't know whether it's a scene or not, but it really needs to be inventoried very quickly, and it, those inventories need to be secured.
Well, I definitely think we can just tape it for now and see if we get a little more.
I still like the idea, Charles, if you don't care to get with them and set something up and.
Need to know what we're getting into before we jump in.
Doing more digging anyway. Larry, you have anything else?
Uh, yes, Larry Smith, when we just appointed to us to one of the boards, he had a sewer issue last Wednesday or last Thursday, and he called a plumber to come verify and check it out. In the meantime, we was up there, and we jetted our line, and we had a blockage in our line. He's asking if the city would pay his plumber for coming to check it out. And I told him that, you know, number one, he should have notified us first for us to check our mains before he went and hired a plumber. And he was at two hundred and eighty dollars, and I told him that I would bring it before the board, but I would not promise nothing.
Hey, now, let, let me make sure I understand. He, he contacted you and told you that he had a block, he didn't before he had a plumber?
He, he had, had the issue Wednesday night, maybe, and then he called plumber Thursday morning, and we, we have certain lines, we routinely go, go around and jet, you know, because there are potential problems. And he seen my guys, and he called them over there, and my guys running the line, jet through his line, and, you know, had a blockage there.
His line on.
But he'd already called the plumber?
He had, the plumber was already there.
Oh.
On his line, service line or the main?
The service line.
Well, we're not responsible for his service line anyway.
No, no. I, I can't see that.
So I told him I didn't think we would. We never had a pass.
I don't know why we. Well, we're not even necessarily supposed to go do it on his service line.
Well, it was in our mains where the problem was, where, where he tied into the mains.
But it was still his service lines were at that intersection?
When we jetted our main, it took care of his problem. So it's, it's either there where it connects or just downstream slightly.
So there actually would have been more people, possibly.
So would there have been a difference in the outcome if he had contacted the city first?
We went up there and jetted our line, you know, we checked the main and jetted it, and then he would not.
And then there would have been no need for a.
He just, you know, what I kinda taught him, he jumped the gun.
Yeah. Shoot.
I, I personally don't see where we would be liable for it on, on someone's property like that.
It's a dangerous precedent to get into. Okay. Larry, you have anything else?
Does it need to be in the form of a motion that we don't, or we just say we don't do it?
Be in a form of motion if we were gonna do it, because it'd be something to put up and be on it. Jim, do you have anything?
Not right at the, on the bad. Yeah, I think, I guess.
Just a few things. And the first one, do you have any idea when you're gonna get your storefront open? I'm excited about downtown businesses.
Well, I don't think we're gonna open a storefront up there.
Are you not? Okay.
Eventually, I believe we'll have our offices in the, the lower left side of the building, and we've not decided what to do with the right side. I think we're, we're on the process right now of selling out the event rental business.
Gotcha, gotcha. But you might possibly rent it out, too.
Yeah, we, we might, yeah, we, we would be, you know, considerable to.
Yeah, because I know there are people that look for downtown buildings.
You have a timeline on when you think you'll be done with your facade construction?
I believe the apartments will have to be ready by the end of the year.
It looks amazing what you've done.
Thank you. I appreciate that. It's been a long road.
I have a friend that used to live in one of the upstairs apartments, and I took a picture and said, look at where you used to live. Look how amazing it looks.
We should see the upstairs apartments now.
I bet they're nice, yeah.
There's a big difference.
What do you think about the facade down there?
Uh, I'm not sure. That's kind of what led to, that's kind of what led to selling the, the event rental businesses, shortage of funds to finish the downstairs and the facade and everything. We're kind of, kind of struggling, so. That building has just ate up a ton of money. So basically, you know, it just, it was, it was really more expensive than we ever thought it would be for the demo work. And then when we started back with restoration process, it just kept getting more and more expensive. It's hard to find people to do what you can do for the same price you can do it for, if that makes any sense, you know.
It's hard to find people to do anything.
Been a long road, the whole, and, and we're just gonna have one more. We're gonna have to get the apartments available so we can get that building paid for, so before we can make another move. We definitely want to get the upstairs finished with new storefronts and blast, and, and the stonework on the front of the building and everything away. The building looks better if it's downtown, and then, and then we can look at either utilizing those spaces or leasing them out to businesses or something.
Is there any way that you all could dress the windows up to make it look nice? Is that a possibility?
What we're looking at doing is maybe just kind of painting some of that lower stuff as much as possible to, to preserve the OSB that's there and make it a little more appealing when you, you know.
Okay.
So if anyone is interested, you would take phone calls about your.
Yeah, we would take phone calls, at least not the space. I, I could have to get back to you on the square footage.
Well, I try not to get in the middle of this, but we do get calls on a fairly regular basis. Is there anything downtown for rent? And if I know there is, you call, and you all can make any kind of discussion on how much space and all that kind of stuff. I don't think that.
I know it's all commercial properties, although we're in the middle of creating a new website, so it'll, it'll be a few months, but if it's not done for a few months, then, yeah.
And then one other thing, Robert Bailey, I don't know if he's contacted you, Kevin. I don't, he's wanting to talk to someone about using the corner sometime, and I know we've talked about it before. Cannot remember what was said.
What did he want for?
I don't know, like a church service or singing or, which I know, you know, probably not now, because it's, well, it's supposed to be called tomorrow. So I've got his number if.
I haven't gotten that to me.
Anyone needs it.
Lives up on Main Street.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I know him. His, his wife went to school with my wife a while.
And then one other thing, I'm sorry.
We've had other people use it before. The only problem we've run into is they tend to want to do stuff, I don't know what he, his plans are, but on a Friday night, and they complain with sounds on second going on, or they want to use it on a Saturday night, and they're talking about, well, there's a concert going on to park, and it's loud, and they can't. So it's just something they need to think about.
Okay, yeah. They might. And then parking. They don't want to block parking. Yeah. The, the other thing I was asked about, and I think you and I were going on to the commission whenever we did the downtown stuff, or I can't remember for sure. I know we walked, but the street lights, the pretty, the pretty lights.
The whole last.
Yes, I've been asked, is there any way possible that one could be put up near the intersection of Third?
I don't know what it would get into. You'd be ripping up sidewalks to run power line up or to.
Under railings, she'll, if we're going to, it'd be a pretty good distance to run it.
I'm afraid, I won't say no, because I'm all for it, but I'm afraid it's gonna be quite expensive to do.
Wonder why we stopped where we did?
I'm not sure, and that was done, actually, that was done a couple of years before we went on.
Well, I was trying to remember the sidewalks, because I know Mary had us to do a walkthrough or something with it, or, I can't remember. Maybe we had run for off. I don't remember, but I know she had us doing something.
We was doing, we was doing the paint the town stuff.
It was before that. It was before that, yeah. It was before the sidewalks were actually put to him, that.
I think that was in two thousand six or seven, wait.
I don't know what year it was.
Or maybe I was just on some committee, and she asked me to, I don't know. I can't remember half of what I've done. But, so, where does that need to go? What needs to be done with it?
We'd have to talk to them.
And they want a bench.
Like this.
There's a bench at Third Street, isn't there?
Well, Valerie Tanner, I think, was instrumental in getting that one.
At that more for Second, not at the Third.
I think a light would be very nice, a bench.
I don't, I don't know why that stopped.
Yeah, because it's part of downtown, so it seems to me like it would have continued.
Beauty shop. Where's it further up?
I think it's a little further up.
Did you guys get a grant for that?
Yeah.
That's probably why it stopped there.
It may have been.
And that very well may have been.
Didn't have enough money to do more.
And that's not something, you know, immediately, but if you, if you could check into it, even after the first of the year, just to see what kind of cost would be involved, and if it is even a possibility.
It'd be astronomical, but I can get you a figure.
Like, major, what, what kind of astronomical are you talking?
Five million dollars.
Oh, okay. Well, that's not as astronomical as what I was thinking. When you say astronomical, I'm thinking twenty or thirty.
I need some of your money.
Yeah, I do, too.
The sidewalk would have to come out to run on the same circuit. And that's another thing, is what circuit is it on? What circuit is it on? Is it gonna be enough, the breaker that it's on will trip, it's gonna be separated, you know?
There's a lot of things that could be looked at.
Yeah, I even thought about maybe them saying something to tourism, because I don't know if any of you guys have been in Shepherd's Market, but Holley Toledo, she has got booth space like crazy, and if it all gets filled, it's probably gonna bring a lot of people in.
Has she got her other building?
That's the one that she's, JoJo has moved in there.
Oh, and the, and the other, and the furniture store? I know they're written down with it.
Yeah, it's not completely finished. JoJo's moved in there, and maybe one or two other vendors. I was in Louisville all weekend, so I, I don't know. And whenever I was there Thursday, I was in a very much of a hurry. But if they all fill up, I think it'll bring in some traffic, especially with JoJo moving there.
Yeah, I think the lighting is, is placed for the vendors to park to see. And up there on their corner, it's actually painted yellow. There's no parking there on Main Street where she's on the light. So I don't know if that's a, be a deciding factor.
Maybe light up that yellow thing where people see it better, and don't park there.
Just don't park there.
When I was in there the other day. Yeah, when I was in there the other day, they said, don't park out front where the yellow is there. And I said, uh, that's why the yellow's there. You're not supposed to park there. I'm too much like my dad. I'm a rule follower.
And I said, I'm your yellow model. No parking sign up out here for any business.
No.
Sounds like to me a, a good economic developer would get you guys a parking garage and be.
Say, when are you gonna start construction on that and this economic developer?
There's your money right there, Larry, and get us a light.
No, I didn't say we have any money.
I think that's all I have.
Go ahead and check with Dwayne, I guess sometime when he's.
I can check with Dwayne on the, on the circuit, but I had talked to Hollis about the, the concrete, because they're re-stamping, and, you know, if he can find the pattern.
Of course, you have something else.
The light itself is about nineteen hundred dollars.
And, you know, who knows, we might get some matching funds. So.
Police department, but I just forgot to come in to Mary. You go the street light out on sixty-two right across from Kevin's building. And that would really brighten it up.
On the Mexican side, Mexican restaurant side.
Right on Tommy James' side.
On the Mexican restaurant side, sorry.
One of them is put up, did help at the intersection, but this one, I will really help it out.
I hadn't noticed those out.
Is this light behind the shoe stores at the city?
I don't know.
It's out. It doesn't work.
We, we put up the lights going down on the Ashby building to help light up that alley.
That looks some nice.
One right there behind the main door.
I don't, I don't think that. Is it up on it where the big three, three transformers on poles?
Uh, it's on pole there. It's a, like, three lights.
I don't think that was ours.
Okay.
I, I don't think.
The shoe store asked if, if it was, if we could get a light put up there. And I said, I don't know. We're gonna do it there.
I know we've got a light out down First Street, right there past, just the one right past. past. I don't know what that dang street to us is, but right there past our church.
Broad Street.
Broadway.
I think so. That one's out. I just noticed it tonight.
Now, some of these...
You know these, Mary?
I don't know if it's a KU.
Some of these will come on and burn so long and go off.
Well, and that's what I was gonna ask about, and when, had, somebody talk about the one there at the corner of East Eighth Street and Main Street by Are You Sleeping? And Liquor Stop? They've just said it's, it's gone out and then somebody said, "Well, maybe there's so much light coming off the Liquor Stop Marquee, it may be turned it off, so..." But they say it's not been on, so there might be another one to have them check on.
Uh, Officer Shepherd's good about checking on things. Maybe quit looking at the ground, be living up.
Give me a list of the lights.
I don't want no more links.
There's one out right there at Second and Madison, right here, Broad, or something. I'd say that's out. There's none out right here.
This, this right here come back on in a minute.